Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the August 4th, 2025 West Fargo City Commission meeting. Before we begin the meeting, I would respectfully ask that everyone that has a cellphone with them this evening, silence them, with the exception of our emergency personnel. I'd also like to announce that Commissioner Brad Olson is not with us this evening. He is virtual. He will be attending virtually. He is attending, he's in Denver, and he is representing the city on the certification of our fire department as to one of only the three certified fire departments in the state of North Dakota. So hopefully that meeting goes well tomorrow. With that, we call the meeting to order. Please join the commission in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in abysmal but liberatory justice.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, would you please call a roll?
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Here.
Commissioner Zandell?
Here.
Commissioner Dartis?
Here.
Commissioner Olson?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Let the record show all commissioners are present. First order of business is Item D is to approve the Order of the Agenda. Moved to approve. Commissioner Anderson moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Zandell, second. So I have a motion and a second to approve the Order of the Agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item E is the approval of the minutes of July 21st, 2025. They are in your packet and have been distributed. Motion to approve. Commissioner Jorgensen moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Zandell, second. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of July 21st as distributed. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item F is the building permits. I call on Commissioner Jorgensen first.
I need to recuse myself from voting on this matter.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Moving to approve.
Mr. Zandell moves to approve the building permits as distributed.
Second.
Commissioner Anderson, seconds. I have a motion and a second to approve the building permits as distributed. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Next order of business is the Consent Agenda. We have items A through D. Motion to approve. Commissioner Jorgensen moves to approve the Consent Agenda, items A through D. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Olson, second. I have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda, items A through D. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. We are now in the regular agenda. We are in the public comment portion. Members of the public will be allowed two and a half, two minutes and 30 seconds to address the city commission. Commissioners will not take any action at this time during the comment period. These individuals had to be signed up by noon today. I'm not going, I have a, a letter, uh, excuse me, I have a listing of the people that have signed up to speak. They're in no particular order, other than the fact of how they came in. So the first order, first individual, and again respectfully, we've asked that you watch the timer. Ms. Hegemeister will be running the time clock up there on the screen. You're allowed two and a half minutes. The first individual is Mr. Christopher Teeman. Please step to this microphone. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome. Thank you very much. So I'm speaking today on the rezoning happening in the Wilds for the Hope Lutheran Church. Today, what I'm up here to do is request a pause on that rezoning. During the review, the planners noted our concern about high traffic volumes that will be brought into our neighborhood. And the, the reason for my request to pause is so that a traffic study and examination of that can be done. Their opinion is that it's efficient, but there is no data showing to back that up at this time that we can see. Any prior traffic studies done in the area are five-plus years old. This was done before much of the west side of Ninth Street was developed, which would significantly change that data and information. I would also like to see data and a study done on how this will affect the existing infrastructure and sustainability, and is a, a structure of this size truly functional within our area, within our neighborhood? Those are kind of my, kind of my main points. One other thing, my last point to hit on here is that in reading the Century Code, North Dakota Century Code, again, I may misinterpret this, not, not totally familiar with all that, but my understanding that is the community, that, and adjacent properties for rezoning, they have a significant impact in the decision on these rezonings, and that is a valid reason to decline a rezoning if necessary, if it doesn't fit within the community and the culture within that neighborhood and community. So I would say that that is a valid reason to potentially decline the rezone if necessary. I know for us, the big thing we only really want is to see the change on that Sixth Street access, you know, as that is a strictly, you know, very small road residential, and that's kind of like our biggest hope is to at least have that removed from the plan if necessary. That's all I have on the matter at this time, so thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Teeman. The next individual that has signed up is Joel Morris. Moving forward, in addition to stating your name, I would respectfully ask that you state your address.
Absolutely.
Good evening, Commissioner. You're welcome, Mr. Morris.
Sorry. Good evening, Commissioners. Again, my name is Joel Morris. I live at 4735 Sixth Street West, so right in the Wilds neighborhood. I'm here tonight to respectfully speak in opposition to the proposed church development at its currently selected location, and to submit a petition signed by 51 households in our neighborhood who share this concern. First and foremost, let me be clear, our opposition is not based on religion or worship. We fully support the right of any faith community to gather and to thrive in our city. Our concerns are rooted solely in the practical impacts this project would have on the neighborhood, on traffic, safety, and land use compatibility. Because of that, we firmly believe this request for denial does not violate the Religious Land Use Institutionized Persons Act. Our concerns are purely about the land use and infrastructure. Furthermore, the Religious Land Use Act only prohibits government actions that impose a substantial burden on religious exercise. Rejecting this particular location or requiring the removal of an exit onto Sixth Street does not prevent the church from functioning or worshiping. It simply calls for the development to occur in a manner consistent with public safety and city planning. The petition I'm submitting today includes those signatures from 51 different households within the affected area. Under North Dakota Century Code, residents of the area have the right to participate in land use decisions that affect the character and function of their neighborhood. This petition reflects a clear and overwhelming voice from those who will be most directly impacted by the proposal. In speaking with all my neighbors, we really had several primary concerns. The largest, of course, being the proposed exit onto Sixth Street. Sixth Street is a very narrow residential road, not designed for high traffic volumes. This creates very real safety concerns for families, childrens, and pedestrians. The other impact was onto Ninth Street. This is a two-lane collector road that I asked our city to, uh, police about, a study on for speeds. Unfortunately, the, uh, there was a speed study done, which is fortunate, unfortunately was several years old. However, that study did find that the speeds exceeded 30 miles an hour on average, roughly 33 miles an hour on average on that road, with between 7,000 and 10,000 vehicles in a week. The addition of a possible 1,000 additional vehicles to that road only increases the risk of accidents. Finally, this proposal contradicts the City's Comprehensive Plan 2.0, which calls for any small-scale institutional or commercial uses to be located around 52nd Avenue, not within the interior of residential neighborhoods. The plan emphasizes that new developments should be designed to be compatible with the existing character of the neighborhood, enhances livability. The project does not do either. I'm sorry, I'm already over time. Again, just final, we're not against the church, we're opposed to the location. On behalf of my neighbors, I respectfully urge the commission to reject the proposal. I did have a copy of that petition in emails to you. If you didn't get it, I can give those to you if needed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Any email that was sent to the mayor's office or to the city has been distributed to all commissioners. So if you send it to one of us as an individual, they have been, uh, they've been all collected by Mr. Aaron Nelson in Planning and Zoning, who I forwarded them all to. So they're all on record, so you know. Next individual to speak that has signed up is Mr. Greg Kaiser. Good evening and welcome.
Greg Kaiser, 729 48th Avenue West. So I'll start with safety. We enlisted a former city and state civil engineer who specialized in traffic mitigation when he was working. He assessed the Hope Church project proposal, and his assessment was provided to each commissioner. In that, in that assessment, he looked at Sixth Streets, 48th Avenue, and 47th Avenue, which are all called local roads. Didn't know that before. But they all have direct access by each property owner via driveway. All three of these roads will be utilized if the Sixth Street access is allowed, and according to that civil engineer's assessment, vehicle crashes and pedestrians, pedestrian accidents will increase. As for the suitability of Ninth Street, let's assume we can all agree that the Sixth Street access is dangerous and not worth the unnecessary risk. That leaves the only access point on Ninth Street. Imagine 400 to 800 vehicles attempting to attend or leave church services in a 30-minute period on Sunday between 9:00 and 9:30, and then again at 10:30 and 11:00. Imagine the long lines of vehicles bottlenecked at stop signs, struggling to gain access to 40th Avenue, 52nd Avenue, and Cheyenne. Imagine the frustration of local residents as they have difficulty backing out of their driveways as cars cut and speed through their neighborhoods in an attempt to bypass long lines at stop signs to gain access to these arterial roads. Imagine the Hope congregation's frustration to get in and out of the church property turns into risky attempts to gain access to Ninth Avenue. Now add 68 feet of snow in the winter. Studies show that 95% of the time, property values increase with the addition of a neighborhood church. However, 5% of cases, when a church, church is too large for an area where it is built, where it causes traffic congestion and produces noise from events, property values plummet. We have every indication, including a professional assessment, that this project will fall into the 5% category. With this proposed project, there seems to be very little upside, except for the church itself. Both the neighborhood and the parishioners will feel the negative impacts of squeezing a very large square peg into a very unsuitable round hole.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Next individual that has signed up is Kaylee Carlin. I'm sorry, did I miss one? My apologies, Kaylee. It's Joshua Frank. I'm, I'm making notes as I go along here, and I got, got ahead of myself. Please state your name and address, sir.
Yes, my name is Joshua Kronk, and I reside in the Wilds at 926 Ashley Drive. I'm here tonight to voice opposition as well to the proposed rezoning request for the new Hope Lutheran campus. My concern, along with many in the area, relate to traffic, infrastructure, and the overall burden on the community. It reiterates some points, but I think that emphasizes their importance. Hope Lutheran is not some small neighborhood church. It is arguably the largest congregation in the region, and with that size comes significant traffic impacts. At its existing campuses in Fargo, vehicle accidents are routine, even involving direct collisions with Hope's own buildings. I would strongly urge this commission to again conduct a traffic survey and review official accident data from their existing campuses before moving forward with this proposal. At the proposal location, Ninth Street acts more like a local road rather than a collector in both Sixth Street and the future 48th, I believe, avenue funnel straight into the neighborhood. Accessing the site requires cutting through residential areas to reach Cheyenne or 42nd, or heading south to 52nd, where no infrastructure, or the infrastructure is severely lacking. Just two lanes, no sidewalks, no streetlights, and a simple stop sign at 52nd and Ninth, which by the way, is the only exit intersection for the entire southern half of the neighborhood. Claims that traffic will spike only on Wednesdays and Sundays are misleading. These churches operate seven days a week, hosting weddings, funerals, funeral processions, daycare, concerts, events, and community groups. This isn't a part-time, two-day-a-week facility, it's a full-time, high-traffic hub, and the area simply isn't built to support it. The cons are numerous, clear and measurable, increased traffic on narrow roads, crash-prone intersections, no sidewalks or pedestrian protections, heavier vehicle burden on streets, and anticipated accelerated, more frequent special assessments for road improvements triggered by church traffic. And for the residents of this neighborhood, as it's clear, and for the city, there are no secular or non-objective pros. In a zoning situation such as this, it appears if the only real benefit is private and subjective and the burdens are public and municipal, then the proposal really shouldn't meet the standard for a smart development, it should meet the standard for rejection. I urge the commission to deny the rezoning requests, or at the very least, delay the approval to reconsider traffic, infrastructure, and community impact. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kronk. The next person is Kylie Carlin. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Kylie Carleen, and I also reside at 926 Ashley Drive West, and I'm also voicing concerns regarding the Hope Lutheran project that's proposed. I'm new to the, I'm new to West Fargo, but I really enjoy it here, and I hope to raise a family here, and that's why I feel the need to bring forth these concerns. And I echo the concerns of everyone else that's gotten up and spoken. I don't have the technical knowledge that a lot of these people do, but I do have a unique perspective on these types of issues. I'm a personal injury attorney here in Fargo, and every day I see vehicle accidents. Motor vehicle on motor vehicle, motor vehicle on pedestrian. And what I see here has the potential to cause real disaster and real havoc in our neighborhoods, and I don't think we want that. Not without some more consideration. Increasing the traffic the way that it's projected, along with having less traveled roadways currently, and as somebody else brought up, the snow that's going to be coming in the winter, and the fact that even 52nd Avenue doesn't have adequate lighting or a stoplight at this point past Cheyenne, this is not going to lead to good outcomes. And it goes beyond inconvenience, it goes to safety. I think that this project is premature and requires more study before it's approved, so I urge the board not to approve right now. Thank you.
Thank you. The next individual signed up is Mr. Kevin Christensen. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. I'm Kevin Christensen, 1035 47th Place West, so I'm, I'm, live in the Wilds. I've actually been really active in the Wilds for lots of years. I started developing the Wilds in 2004, okay? Today, we've got over 3,000 residents in the Wilds. You've got 50 people or so that are against this project. I'm all for it. I think it's a great addition to the neighborhood. I'm excited to have it part of the neighborhood. I think that the neighborhood is designed to have a church in that location. It makes sense, it's an arterial, and I hope you approve the project.
Thank you, sir. Next individual is Mr. Paul Niasse. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, sir. Good evening and welcome.
Paul Niasse, 5585 Harpside Court, South Fargo, North Dakota. I'm a senior pastor of Hope Lutheran Church, been a pastor there for 24 years. We have been planning for over a decade for a West Campus in our community, and three years of, of planning and working hand-in-hand with the city staff, which we've greatly enjoyed here to find an ideal location with the right price and the right resources for a church. Our goal is to provide a place of worship in the West Fargo community, where about 20% of our church already lives and resides, but also where we see tremendous growth and lack of churches in terms of density and, and, and in terms of the, the city design. And so our goal really is to be a good neighbor and to bless the community as much as we can. Churches, of course, we believe are a great positive to communities because they're places of worship that help people with their spiritual life, but also help people emotionally, socially, and spiritually in their community. We have a big focus on kids, and a lot of our design is by, about creating spaces for kids. We also, as a church, host many activities that are outside of our, our mission for organizations like Alcoholics Anonymous, as well as, um, other organizations like Scouts and things like that in our community, our other campuses. Just some, some facts, because I think there's concerns about the size. We have currently a West Campus at a leased space up by Plaza Azteca. 655 people was our average weekly attendance. That's over three services between Wednesday and Sunday, and half of those are kids who do not drive. So that's our current place. We, of course, do plan on growing. Last year, between Hope North and Hope South, we did 37 weddings. Most of those, 75% of them, were at wedding venues. We used to do a lot of weddings, but now wedding venues have taken over the game. So we travel to do weddings. So I anticipate, we've had one wedding at Hope West since its inception. So weddings will be a pretty infrequent sort of thing. We did 63 funerals at Hope North and Hope South last year, excuse me, and at funeral homes. The majority of them were at Hope. The average size of a funeral is about 100 to 125 people. That is a piece. And yes, churches are active, and that's a good thing. Seven days a week, we have Bible studies and youth group activities and all kinds of things. Most of those are between 50 and 100 people. Want to encourage you, one last thing. I have talked with our leadership, and we, we want to be good neighbors and listen to our neighbors, and we are more than willing to work with the city and the neighborhood, especially on the Sixth Street access, to put up appropriate signage to limit access, say in the emergency access only, or no through traffic, and announce and train our members likewise. And so we're more than willing to make those concessions and, and see how we can work. But we would like to have entrance to Sixth Street for our current residents that live there. We do believe the church is great for the neighborhood, and also would like that Sixth Street entrance for any future development to the east. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. The next individual that has signed up is Ms. Terri Abbott. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. Hi, my name is Terri Abbott. My husband Dan and I live at 730 Ronnie Way West, which is part of the Ranch at the Wilds. I moved to Fargo in 1989 to get closer to my family. I searched many churches before finding Hope Lutheran Church, and quickly became a member of Hope. In 1998, my husband built his home at 3712 22nd Street South, one block east, and three houses south of Hope Lutheran Church's South Campus. In 2003, my husband and I married, and I moved into that home. And one of the perks for me and my children were being close to walking distance to the church. It was hard to believe, it was hard to leave our old neighborhood to move to the ranch, in part because we loved the proximity to Hope South. But it has been a joy to connect with nearly all of our wonderful neighbors here. When I first learned that Hope had acquired farmland and a field behind our home, I was overjoyed with excitement. You see, my husband has Parkinson's disease, and it's very difficult for him to travel anywhere, even to the VA for, for his appointments. Having the new campus so close was a dream come true. Living so close to Hope South allowed me to become aware of what goes on at Home, Hope from day to day. The south parking lot exit was nearest to our street on 22nd Street South. The street jumps from 25th to 22nd because of the lot size. It would not be uncommon for cars to exit to the left and turn right onto our street as they left the church. They would also go all the way down 40th Avenue so that they could get to the light down there. There was never a time that I regretted living so close to my church due to church traffic. It simply was never a problem, even during busy times at the church. Additionally, there are many young children that live on our very long block, children with disabilities, and to my knowledge, no one was ever impacted negatively by the traffic from the church. I love living close to my church. I'm excited to have that opportunity again. There is a special peace that comes from knowing that our new church will be built in that field, and none of us have to wonder what the alternative builds might look like. I have many fond memories of walking into the church parking lot at Hope South and seeing parents teaching their children how to ride bike, or a parent in the, in the passenger seat teaching their teen how to parallel park, or attending a beautiful outdoor service, filling the atmosphere with beautiful music. Hope is a special place. From the pastors to the staff, they love serving the community in big and small ways. I would encourage you to check out Hope South. Pay attention to the details that surround the church campus, from the mature trees that line the property, to the well-thought-out landscaping that create a warmth, to the properties that surround it. I'm excited to start a new chapter in my new neighborhood and meet many young people and families that bring their children to church and Sunday school, and go back to volunteering again. This is, there's room for everyone here, even this beautiful church, and I hope that you will reconsider and pass this, Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott. The next individual that has signed up is Mr. Larry O'Callahan. Good evening, welcome.
My name is Larry O'Callahan. I'm a resident of the Ranch at the Wilds at 742 Ronnie Way. There are concerns being raised regarding Hope Lutheran Church and its proposed location. The West Fargo staff have noted that religious institutions such as churches are permitted by right within single-family zoning districts as submitted. The request by Hope has been approved twice, to my knowledge. The proposed rezoning to R-1A is the same zoning district as adjacent properties to the west and north of the subject property, and is consistent with the residential nature of the surrounding neighborhood. The property to the south is known as the Ranch at the Wilds, and is a planned unit development, as you know. The city of West Fargo has an ordinance that reads under this. Section 5, Section 4-422.2 of the Revised Ordinances of 1990 of the City of West Fargo is hereby amended and reenacted to read as follows. Permitted uses: single-family detached dwellings, publicly owned and operated parks, playgrounds, recreational facilities, schools, churches, religious institutions, and places of worship. Essential services and public buildings. We already have several of these properties nearby in our neighborhood. They've been approved. I wanted to reiterate, there are some very easy things Hope can do to minimize the traffic concerns of our neighbors to the north. They are: signage to the exit on Sixth stating emergency exit only. Please use exit onto Ninth Street. Or, statement printed in the bulletin stating please be respectful to our neighbors by exiting on Ninth Street. Use the north exit of going north and south exit of going south. That'll reduce cross-traffic on Ninth. Or, statement by pastor to close of worship asking members to be respectful of neighbors and direct them accordingly on how to exit. Or, we could station a volunteer in parking lot at exit onto Sixth, asking people attempting to use Sixth to use Ninth instead, as it does exist. Or, maps highlighting routes we want members to follow. This could be online and included in any future promotional materials by print or mail. So in closing, I believe these and other solutions would help reduce the anxiety of our neighbors and allow the West Fargo City Commission to approve these zoning requests. Respectfully, Larry O'Callahan.
Thank you, Mr. O'Callahan. The next person is Marilyn O'Callahan. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Marilyn O'Callahan. Thank you for the opportunity to share a personal reflection. As you know, Hope Lutheran is a church, one church, with three locations. We have a history of being a good neighbor. I pray that we can work together to move forward and address all concerns. Over 15 years ago, I was on the church council, including a stint as church president. The vision for the West Campus was discussed over those years, and now it is a reality. You can imagine, as Commissioners, the joy that I feel to have this project come to attrition. This was a factor, actually, in our decision to move from Fargo to the Ranch at the Wilds four years ago to be a part of this community. And I'd like to throw a little twist in it, because Hope supports community and community adventures, community growth. I spent 43 years in education, and I am an advocate for kids and teens, especially teens. Hope has a strong commitment towards the youth. It is who we are. This is just one of the many contributions that should be... This is just one of the many contributions that should be a priority, and I hope you consider the priorities of what this church can bring to a solid community. Hope wants to work with us in positive ways. Please consider priorities, and we can work through the challenges.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Callahan. The next person that has signed up is Nathan Gemar. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. So again, Nathan Gamer. I live at five twelve Forty-seventh Avenue West in West Fargo with my wife and two kids. That's at the corner of Sixth Street and Forty-seventh Avenue. Although we recognize the concerns about the increased traffic in the area, we are overall in favor of the project and appreciate the thoughtful planning behind it by the board and the city. We understand that any development in this space will affect traffic patterns. However, we believe that Hope Lutheran Church project will ultimately enhance both our neighborhood and the wider community. So I, we just want to go on record for that and appreciate all the planning work and your guys' decision.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next individual that has signed up is Mr. Don Schmidt. Good evening and welcome.
Mayor Dardis and members of the West Fargo City Commission, my name is Don Schmidt. I live at eight twelve Ronnie Way West in West Fargo. My wife Sylvie and I are members of Hope Lutheran Church and have been since we moved to West Fargo four years ago. I am here today in support of the Hope Lutheran Church addition request. When we first heard about Hope adding a third campus in West Fargo and later that the church had purchased property just to the north of our house, we were very pleased. Of course, access to the church events would be very handy, because the closest other church is over three miles away. But there are several more important reasons for our support for this addition. First, we are discussing Hope Lutheran Church, which has a history in the Fargo and West Fargo communities for nearly seventy-five years. They have a track record. They are stabilizing force. As the planning for a church in West Fargo has evolved, my wife and I have participated in design discussions with Hope leadership and its architect. They have listened and made modifications based on concerns. Having a church in our neighborhood is a good thing for the community and the surrounding area. There is considerable research that supports this. Reduction of crime makes our community safer, more stable, and productive. There is accountability. If there are concerns, there is always someone to talk to. They support values that benefit the broader community. They're a good neighbor, and more. I encourage the Commission to support the Hope Lutheran Church addition request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. The next person is Mr. Brian Berg that has signed up.
Brian Berg, one thirty-five North Woodcrest Drive in Fargo. I am the architect representing the design team for Hope on the west campus project. Commissioner Dardis and Commissioners, we began working with Hope about five years ago, looking for a permanent site for the west campus. Very few sites that meet the criteria for Hope exist in West Fargo, and Hope really wants to be a part of the West Fargo community. Throughout this process, throughout the process, the design team and representatives of Hope Lutheran have been in regular contact with city staff. We've had multiple meetings, and options were discussed that helped shape this project. The site requirements that we had were for around twelve acres. We needed access to a main collector street or avenue. We needed city utilities available to the, directly to the site, and we wanted to be a neighborhood church. We wanted to be in a neighborhood and be in a, in a our occupancy type of, or in our zoning type of a neighborhood. The site was first identified three years ago, and it was initially located off of Fifty-Second Avenue. I know there's been some discussion about the Fifty-Second Avenue site. It was studied extensively. We had multiple meetings with West Fargo city staff and engineering and planning. Unfortunately, the frontage on Fifty-Second Avenue only allows for one point of egress and ingress, and so one access point. Also, no utilities are available on Fifty-Second at all, which means that in order to serve that site, utilities would have to come from Ninth, which would have required a large easement and would have required connectivity to Ninth for a second point of egress. In fact, the site would require access probably to Ninth and Sixth, and at that point, there was a drawing that showed connectivity to the north and to the east, or to the west. So this site would not, that site would not support the project without significant additional infrastructure, which would have included connectivity to Ninth and Sixth. And connectivity in that area is a stated goal of the, of the planning department in the City of West Fargo, as, as has been indicated on the concept development plans. So the property to the, to the west was suggested. The current plan was developed with significant input from city staff. Rezoning this piece of property from AG to R1 fits within the West Fargo's published growth plan, and city leadership has been on, on record saying that West Fargo needs more neighborhood churches, so we're excited to be a part of that. Hope Lutheran has a long history of being a light in the community, and they hope that they can be a light for West Fargo. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berg. The next individual is Eric Rude. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. My name is Eric Rude. I live at four four six Persimmon Place.
A little closer to the mic.
I live at four four six Persimmon Place in West Fargo. It's in the Wilds. I just want to speak and let you guys know that I'm in favor of, of Hope and the rezoning here. Hope's been our church for twenty years, and they're a very responsible organization. I think the neighborhood will be beautified and also, what do I want to say? I believe that Hope will be of very positive, positive impact to our community, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next individual is Nikki Johnson. Good evening and welcome.
My name is Nikki Johnson. I actually reside at thirty-four Forty-eight Fifty-Fourth Street South in Fargo, but I attended Hope South my whole life, grew up there, and now I attend Hope West, and I'm on the Hope Lutheran Board of Directors. I first just want to speak to the fact that I'm absolutely in favor of the church. I think it's going to be a wonderful addition to the community. It's just their focus on youth and the impact they have. I can speak to it in my own life, my own family's life, my friends. It's just, it's a wonderful place for a community. But I wanted to address some of the specific concerns that people have brought up. First is the neighborhood traffic and safety. Throughout the City of West Fargo, our leaders have put in place sidewalks, bike paths, speed limits, all kinds of other infrastructure necessary to ensure that when a community asset is a blessing like a school or a church comes along, that those facilities can be connected and utilize residential streets. It's, it still allows for the safety of the children, because that's the way the cities have been planned. The neighbors currently petitioning are no different from those throughout the whole city. There's, there's churches and schools throughout the city that are using residential roads. I can understand the desire not to have cars drive by your home, but that's not the reality of a community. Communities are meant to be connected, and to assume that vehicles are a sign of unsafe children just doesn't seem to be the reality, because if you look throughout our communities, people generally, a lot of families, love to move to a place that has a church or school. It increases property value generally. And so I don't think to assume that since those cars, our, our children are unsafe is an accurate assumption. And then also, Brian spoke a lot on this, but just, I, I wanted to speak to any belief that our congregation did not, we weren't extremely thoughtful about this piece of land. Our leaders have been working tirelessly for years to identify and secure this location. We feel it is the best location for our church to reside, and it will, we truly want to be a great neighbor. We're going to put churches, or churches, trees throughout the property. We, we make sure we measure sound so that it's not impacting the neighbors, and we think when the facility is complete, it's going to be something that the community is truly excited to have. So we just hope that you truly consider approving the plot as presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. That concludes the fifteen people that had signed up for public comment on this issue, on all issues. So with that, we close the public comment. We now go into item number two, which is public hearings. Public comment opportunity regarding CBBDG funds for the Elson Shores Senior Housing Project. We're going to call on Mr. Aaron Nelson, our Director of Planning and Zoning. This is the first reading, and the purpose of the discussion is, please continue.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner President Dardis, and good afternoon, Commissioners. So this item is a public hearing that is required as part of the city's Community Development Block Grant Award for the Elson Shores Senior Housing Project. No action is requested by the Commission tonight other than to hold a public hearing. In terms of some background information, Commissioners may recall that the city was awarded about one point six million dollars in Community Development Block Grant Funds in two thousand and twenty-four. This grant award is to assist Beyond Shelter, Inc. and the Housing Authority of Cass County with land acquisition costs for an affordable senior housing project called Elson Shores, which is to be located on the west side of Sixth Street East, just right across the street from City Hall here. Because federal funds are being utilized and environmental review was required prior to the use of the funds, the environmental review was recently concluded with a finding of no significant impact. Tonight's public hearing is required as part of the grant process in order to receive citizen comments regarding the environmental review's finding of no significant impact, as well as the city's intention to request release of Community Development Block Grant Funds. So with that overview, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have for staff. Otherwise, again, the requested action tonight is to simply hold a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Commissioners, any questions? Anyone? All right, thank you. With that, we close the regular agenda, and we are now in a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this issue? It's Elson Shores Senior.
David Withy, twenty-four twenty-one McLeod Drive East. My wife and I live less than half a mile from this location. Last time this was brought up, I spoke in favor of it. I still speak in favor of it. I'm sure everybody else in the area does, but that's their choice to voice their own opinions. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for the neighborhood, and I hope you continue to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Again, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of the Elson Shores Senior Housing Project? Seeing none, is there anyone that would like to speak against the Elson Shores Senior Housing Project? Is there anyone that would like to speak aga- against it? Is there anyone that would like to speak against it? With that, the public hearing is closed. Again, as pointed out by Mr. Nelson, this is just information at this time, and there's no action taken. So we move on. The next public hearing is the first reading in the adoption of the city's updated flood management ordinance. We call on Mr. Jerry Wallace, the city engineer for the City of West Fargo. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner President and Commissioners. I'm here before you tonight. This is really the culmination of about a six-month effort that we've been going back and forth with FEMA on. Essentially, the city is one of a relatively small handful of communities in the nation that are participating in the National Flood Insurance Program. As part of that participation, the city has been awarded a basement exception to be able to construct floodproof basements in the floodplain for the better part of fifty years now. Recently, with a lot of the diversion work, essentially the flood insurance study that we have typically used in years past has changed, and as such, we need to stay current with that. As part of that effort, the city essentially needed to develop a basement exception floodproof basement design guide, and between the edits that we've made to the ordinance here, that design guide, all augmenting our existing floodproofing code, I'm here before you tonight to essentially ask that you approve the first reading regarding the adoption of the city's updated floodplain management ordinance. Traditionally, the city in years past relied on extensive efforts of our consultant partners and data from the City of Fargo. You know, given that times change, standards change, technological data about our environment improves, FEMA had commented that essentially they would like to see the, the other communities in our metro, other than just the City of Fargo, develop a basement, floodproof basement design guide, and that, that was the significant effort here. But basically, in closing, like I said initially, we're here for the first reading, and I would ask that you approve the first reading regarding the adoption of the city's updated floodplain management ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Commissioners, any questions, Mr. Wallace? Anyone? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
With that, again, we are now out of the regular agenda, and we are in a public comment period, public hearing for the first reading, the adoption of the city updated flood management ordinance. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this? Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this? Action on the city's updated flood management ordinance. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this? Hearing none. Is there anyone that would like to speak against the City of West Fargo's updated flood management ordinance? Is there anyone that would like to speak against? Is there anyone that would like to speak against? With that, I close the public hearing. We are now back in the regular agenda. This is an actionable item, and the purpose is, is Mr. Wallace is requesting the adoption of the city's updated flood management, the first reading of the City of West Fargo's updated flood management ordinance.
I move we approve the first reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, Commissioner Zundell. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Anderson, second. I have a motion in a section to approve the first reading of the adoption of the city's updated flood management ordinance. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All who is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Item number three is eight twenty-four dash thirty-two, the Hope Lutheran Addition, a request for subdivision and rezoning from agricultural to residential dash one A. Again, we call on Mr. Aaron Nelson, the Director of Planning and Zoning.
Thank you. So item three is a request for approval of the Hope Lutheran Addition subdivision and zone change from A agricultural to R one A, single-dwelling residential. The specific requested action today is to approve the second reading of the rezoning ordinance, as well as the final plat, including associated subdivision and public dedication agreements. This request comes to you with recommendation of approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Most recently, a public hearing for this item was held at the July twenty-first City Commission meeting, at which the Commission voted to approve the first reading of the rezoning ordinance. Because this item was presented in full at the last City Commission meeting, I will try and keep my presentation here a little more brief for you guys, but certainly feel free to ask any questions along the way. So to summarize, the Commission is being asked to approve two separate but related development entitlements. The first is the requested rezone of the subject property from its current designation of A agricultural to the proposed zoning district of R one A, single-dwelling residential. So I've got the, excuse me, the zoning map up on the screen just for a point of reference here. The areas in gray are currently within the agricultural zoning district. The areas in yellow are currently within the requested R one A district. The second request is for the final plat approval of the proposed Hope Lutheran Addition, which is a subdivision consisting of a single twelve-acre lot. There have been no changes to the proposed rezoning or subdivision requests since this item was presented, presented to the Commission on July twenty-first. Since the last meeting, however, the city has received an updated draft of the proposed site plan from the applicant, as well as additional public comments, and signed petition from residents in the general vicinity of the subject. from residents in the general vicinity of the subject property. Regarding the site plan, the applicant has noted their intent to try and further address public comments by adjusting the parking lot and landscaping areas adjacent to residential lots. We have included both the previous version of the site plan, as well as the current version of the site plan. Here, staff would like to emphasize that the site plan is for informational purposes only, however, and the site plan will not, is not within the scope of review by the City Commission. The scope of review of the City Commission, again, is simply those two entitlements, the zone change and the plat. Regarding the additional public comments, the concerns noted in the additional comments received are largely consistent with the comments expressed previously at the public hearing. For those in opposition, the primary concern appears to be the potential for increased traffic along adjacent streets, especially in relation to that proposed connection point to Sixth Street West, which has been discussed. The city has also received several comments in support of the proposal, and ordered a desire for development of the site, excuse me, as an amenity to the neighborhood. All comments received up until this afternoon have been added to the meeting packet and are included as part of the public record. Lastly, given the concerns expressed at the July 21 meeting, it is important to highlight that religious institutions are afforded special protections under federal law. Federal regulations require that any development conditions or restrictions imposed on a religious institution must be narrowly tailored to address a compelling governmental interest that is supported by objective evidence. As such, staff advises that any such conditions, restrictions, or denial of the request be carefully considered in consultation with the city attorney and city staff. In closing, staff finds the request to be consistent with city plans and ordinances as outlined within the staff report, and this item comes to you again with the recommendation of approval from the West Fargo Planning and Zoning Commission. The requested action tonight is to approve the second reading of the rezoning ordinance and the final plat, including those associated subdivision and public dedication agreements, copies of which are included in the staff report as well. Representatives of the applicant are present. Should you have any questions for the applicant? Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have for staff. So that concludes staff's presentation. Again, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Commissioners, questions for Mr. Nelson? I would like to state that the planning and zoning, working with both sides of this issue, which is obviously a very emotional issue, I commend you for your professionalism and working with both sides and providing them with the information and necessary data. So, well done.
Thank you.
Again, Commissioners, this is the second reading of the Hope Lutheran Addition, and there are two parts to this. So if a Commissioner makes a motion, if you separate it for rezoning, then final a plat, you can include it in one or separately, whatever is your desire. I will accept a motion either way. Mr. Zundell, you have something?
I would propose, in order to make this more objective, because I think traffic seems to be the main concern, I would move that we table this and the city pay for a traffic study. Things that I'm interested in would, of course, be traffic on Sixth Street, but also on Ninth. And then I think also a comparison of what the traffic would be if this was developed as originally intended seems to be another big topic of conversation. I know the PD was planning on doing a speed study, it sounds like, next week as well as a result of all the commentary. And I know, obviously, we have some updates to include, which would include the roundabout that's coming in 2029 on 52nd Avenue. So, I mean, I agree, I think, to act in good faith and make all of the considerations. I think we should have something objective to go on. So I would move that they are both tabled until we can do a traffic study.
Thank you. May I? I call on Mr. Dan Hanson. Step to the podium, please. With all due respect to Mr. Wallace, who's our city engineer, Mr. Hanson was up until about two months, three months ago, how long does it take to do a traffic study?
We would hire a consultant to do that, and I would think that they would be able to have the data collected within a month and within the next month produce it. So I would say two months.
And what type of expense would the city incur?
Speaking, without having seen a task order, I would, I would assume that it would be under $10,000.
Just wanted that information for the Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Hanson. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I will second that one.
Commissioner Anderson, seconds. We have a motion and a second to table, excuse me, to table this issue. Item number three, 824-32. The reason I ask the question is that normally, when you're doing a table of a motion, the protocol of the North Dakota Legislature is it has to be brought back the next day. The protocol that the city of West Fargo has been using is brought back at the next meeting two weeks from now. That is not feasible from what Mr. Hanson just told us. So respectfully, would you please consider amending your motion to a future date, more than 30 days out? I think that it's important that all of these good folks know when it's going to come back before the city of West Fargo.
Mr. Hanson, do you have a date?
That...
I would say at the earliest available commission meeting after receiving the traffic study from the consultant.
So, shall we say the first Monday in October?
That would be fair.
I would love to amend my motion to be...
Second, accept the amendment?
Yes.
The first Monday of October.
All right. We have a motion and a second, and it is to be brought back at the first Monday meeting in October.
It's like October 6th.
October 6th, thank you. Is there any discussion? Mr. Anderson?
When it comes to paying for this, we're going to discuss how we're paying for it when that study gets brought back to us for approval, or does that need to be discussed here right now?
That's a great question. Thank you for it. Our city administrator is on vacation this week, and I would want to work with, I will work with Mr. Scott with regard to where these revenues might come from, unless, Mr. Hanson, you can clarify for us.
In the engineering budget, there is professional services of up to $40,000. I believe that there would be enough money within that budget to spend it out of the engineering budget.
So that $40,000 in your budget is a placeholder for things that might arise like this?
Correct.
Does that answer your question?
Yep.
And I can't speak that I know exactly how much has been spent, but I believe there should be enough to cover the study.
Upon Mr. Scott's return, I'll clarify that, and if you would also take the lead on that, include me. All right. We have a motion and a second to table 824-32, the Hope Lutheran Addition, request for subdivision and rezoning from agriculture to residential-1A, and for the final plat. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Let the record show that there are three in favor, one against, and I am recusing myself. My household neighbors this property, and I have an immediate family member that is a member of Hope Lutheran Church, so I have to recuse myself. The vote is three to one. Thank you, Commissioners. Item number four, is a request for approval of the 2026 preliminary budget. We call on Mr. Willie Galindo, the Director of Finance for the City of West Fargo. Willie, let's take a short break, because, thank you, folks, all for coming. We appreciate your civic engagement. I hope that's all right with you that I did that all the time, because by rule, if we don't state it, it has to be back at the next meeting. Please continue.
Good evening, Commissioner President, Commissioners in person and online. We once again bring forward the 2026 preliminary budget. There is minimal change from the presentation made on July 21 Commission meeting. The preliminary budget is balanced still with no deficit and no use of reserves.
Could you state that again and lean into the microphone?
Sure. The preliminary budget is balanced still with no deficit and no use of reserves. Minor adjustments have been made to the departmental expenditures since the Commission reviewed the preliminary budget. There we go. Thank you. This $6,340 of reduction includes office supplies, postage, and telephone in several departments. The water, sewer, and sanitation utility funds saw a decrease in expenditures due to a correction in the transfers outlined items. The summary of all funds shows that there have been slightly changes due to those adjustments mentioned before. All funds are balanced, with the exception of the utility funds, which have an intentional surplus as part of its long-term plan of building up its reserves. The property tax calculation slide has not changed since July 21 meeting. We have calculated the 3% increase plus new growth as allowed by HB 1176 that is now North Dakota law. There will be no change to property tax revenue going forward in this budget process. Longevity pay update, excuse me. Staff continues to work on the longevity pay options and its policy. If additional expense is approved, a revenue source will need to be identified for this. We have action items we are requesting tonight. The preliminary budget should be approved at this meeting to ensure compliance with state law. Commission may approve the preliminary budget as presented or approve the preliminary budget with changes. If changes are made, staff would adjust forecasted building fees and/or franchise fees to maintain a balanced budget. Staff would incorporate amendments before publishing the updated version of the preliminary The Commission has set a public hearing for September 8, 2025. That would be a Commission meeting. Staff anticipates providing additional budget updates during this meeting as well. The timeline scheduled shows that we are still on track with our timeline to meet the final budget deadline of its approval, either on September 22 or October 6. Preliminary budget information is available on our website at westfargandd.gov/budget. If any changes are made tonight, we will incorporate those changes and have them published online within a week. That concludes the presentation portion of our budget, and I stand before you to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Galindo. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Anderson?
One of the first slides you had, you said that you reduced some expenditures in the utility funds. Is that correct? Can you provide some detail around that, please?
Yes. We have reduced some expenditures based on some of the questions and feedback that we received already. That totaled about $6,340. Yes.
Any others? Additional questions? Mr. Galindo? Commissioner Olson, any questions?
Yes, I do.
Please.
On the longevity pay, do we need to make a decision on that tonight or at a later meeting?
We're not asking for any action tonight. We just wanted to provide an update on it.
Do you hear that, Commissioner?
Yes, I did. But if we're balanced now, and we go into longevity pay, will we be unbalanced, and then we're going to have to come up with another mechanism to fund those longevity pay?
Thank you for the question. Mr. Galindo will respond.
Yes. We do have the ability to adjust some of our forecasts, revenue budgets. The franchise fees is one to look at, as well as the building permit fees. The franchise fees are based on price and volume, which tends to be a seasonal factor in some cases. One of the franchises is electricity and the other is gas. Depending on the seasons, those could rise dramatically, or they could stay pretty stable.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Galindo. There are four proposals that Mr. Scott has been working with you and your finance department and Mr. Hanson, Mr. Hanson as well, and Mr. Nick Lee, with regard to the longevity pay. And there, this longevity pay is approximately $100,000 a year, and some of them are less as far as the different proposals. Am I not correct?
That is correct.
All right. So that gives you a perspective, Commissioner Olson, the about amount of dollars that we will have to find in the budget.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else?
One more.
Yes, please.
Question. Back to the screen that Commissioner Anderson brought up, there were two things, one for $6,300 and one for $300,000. Where's the $300,000? Please explain that one.
The $308,100 is stemming from the utility fund expenditures, the transfers out. We updated the transfers on the general fund side, which is known as the transfer in, but we omitted to go back into the utility funds themselves and adjust the transfers out. So that's what this correction does, and it was during one of the inquiries, like you and other Commissioners had during these past few weeks.
Do you have a follow-up, Commissioner Olson?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yep. I have a follow-up. Okay, so there's a change to the transfers out from the utility funds. Were the utility rates that were approved last meeting, were they reflective of this $308,000? Like, or are we, did we set them too high?
The revenues were set forth using the correct expenditures at the time, and it was something that was amiss during the budgeting presentation process.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Additional questions for Mr. Galindo? Thank you, sir. Again, this is an actionable item, and we're looking to either approve or deny the 2026 preliminary budget.
I move.
Approve.
Commissioner Olson moves to approve. Commissioner Zundell, seconds. I have a motion and a second to approve the 2026 preliminary budget as presented this evening. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried, thank you, Mr. Galindo.
Thank you.
Next order of business is item number five, Project 9061, a public works sanitation expansion, Phase 2. We call on Mr. Matt Anvik, the Director of Public Works. The purpose of this discussion, which he will lead, is to accept the bids and award the contract. Mr. Anvik?
Good evening, Commissioner President and commissioners. Like you said, tonight, bringing forward Phase 2 of our expansion for Public Works. As you recall, in early June, you approved Phase 1, which was the remodel of two of our outbuildings. Phase 2 is the remodel and expansion of the Public Works building itself, the main building, and our sanitation building as well. On July 24th, we held bid openings, and we were actually pleased to have really good numbers come in. We had 10 bidders for the general construction. Lowest bid was for Valor Contracting for $6,831,400. We actually had four bids for the mechanical contracting. Peterson Sheet Metal came in the lowest at $1,849,000. And for our electrical contractor, we had four bids come in, and Scott's Electric was at $600,018. So the total for Phase 2 actually came in at $9,350,518, which is actually quite a bit less than what our preliminary estimate was. Preliminary estimate was about $11,960,000. So, we're pretty happy that they came in at that low a time. Just kind of going for the breakdown of that, what this is gonna do is, we're gonna actually enhance our crew spaces. Our crews have enlarged over the last few years, making different crew spaces available up at Public Works and Sanitation as well. A lot of it is vehicle storage, but the big addition part at Public Works will be to expand our ability to work on the city fleet that has grown as well with mechanic space there for doing the repairs. With this, sanitation is actually increasing the size there, too. Always sanitation forestry and our electrical apartments down at the sanitation facility down there. Sanitation is the one that's actually gonna grow kind of the largest since the fact we've had about half of our fleet now that has grown has been sitting outside, and there was multiple times last winter where we had a few trucks go down and weren't able to start our backup trucks because they were sitting outside and too cold to actually fire when it was, you know, probably about negative 15. Moving forward with that, still with our same funding source, we are in the final stages of getting the okay for our SRF loans, which are covered about 95% of the total project cost of Phase 1 and Phase 2. Excuse me. We will also be using some money coming from the CIP, which we had about $8 million that was kind of set aside for this project. Now, we're looking at about $4 million to use for that, and then some funds for the water reserve fund, or water reserve to pay for our cost share for the majority of the project. We're looking at, if approved, we'll start this fall with completion probably in the spring of 2027. So tonight, I'll ask for approval for award of the contract to Valor Contracting, Peterson Sheet Metal, and Scott's Electric, excuse me. And all these awards are pending DEQ approval for the SRF loans. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions from Mr. Anvik?
I move that we approve the bids and then award a contract.
Commissioner Zundell moves to approve the bids and award the contract as outlined by Mr. Matt Anvik, Director of Public Works regarding Project 9061, the public works sanitation expansion, Phase 2. I'll second. I have a second, Commissioner Jorgensen. We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried, thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
Item number six is Project Number 9021, wastewater serviceability and a risk reduction study. We call on Mr. Dan Hanson, the Senior Director of Community and Development. The purpose of this discussion is to approve a task order number 98-1, Mr. Hanson.
Thank you, Commissioner President, artists and commissioners. In June, the city commission awarded this study to more engineering, and we've had two scoping meetings to further identify exactly, draw a box around everything that is intended to be studied with this study. The purpose of it is that right now, SA 40 is our main sanitary lift station that pumps all the sewage from West Fargo over to Fargo, and this is a little bit of a risk if there is to be anything that happens to it. We have a future growth area that's going to happen, so there's future lift stations that are going to be needed, and the intent of this study is to look over the entire city system, model it, come up with ideas and plans for how we're going to provide some redundancy as well as take care of our future growth areas. And with that, we were also able to secure a grant from the North Dakota Department of Emergency Services that will cover up to $278,055 towards the cost of this study, so that is very helpful. And so, I believe the scope of services is in the packet, and with that, I would recommend approving Task Order Number 98-1 with more engineering, and I'll stand for questions.
Questions for Mr. Hanson? Commissioners?
I move to approve.
Commissioner Olson moves to approve Task Order Number 98-1, wastewater serviceability and risk reduction study, or risk that, approve that task order to more engineering.
Second.
Commissioner Zundell, second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried, thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
And item number seven is Mr. Hanson's as well, that's Project Number 9063, the West Fargo Core Area Flooding Study. Mr. Hanson will be leading that conversation, and the purpose is to approve a task order number 99, Mr. Hanson.
Thank you, Commissioner Artis and commissioners. Much like the last study, this study was also awarded to more engineering to study and model our core area storm sewer system. It is not currently modeled throughout. There's also a study that's being done by the Core that is studying after the FM diversion gets completed. The intent is that the Core's project, the FM diversion project, will be removing the gates from the city of West Fargo, so those gates will no longer be active because the protection will be provided by the FM diversion. So, that study being completed by the Core is going to be looking at what are the potential negative impacts that could happen by removing those gates. What this study here does is the existing storm sewer system in the Core area was designed back in the 50s, 60s, and it was not designed to current day's standards, and with us moving forward from the Core area study with numerous reconstructs in the Core area, this study here is going to lay out basically how all of these different sub-area watersheds are going to tie in and eventually size a lift station that would be located likely at that 622 Morrison Street property that the city had purchased a while ago. So this study is gonna be instrumental for multiple upcoming designs in the Core area for all of those reconstructs, and it's important because when we do all of those different projects, all of those projects have a little box around that area, but we need something that's gonna tie in the whole area so that way we know what the downstream impacts from those subwatersheds are going to do. So, again, with that, we also did receive an emergency services, North Dakota Department of Emergency Services grant to cover $262,500 worth of this study, and I would recommend also approving Task Order Number 99 with more engineering, and I would stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson, commissioners, questions? This is an actionable item.
I motion to approve.
Commissioner Jorgensen moves to approve Task Order Number 99 to more engineering for the West Fargo Core Area Flooding Study and accept the grant of up to 75% of the cost. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Anderson, seconds. I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried, thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
Item number eight is the second reading of Ordinance 1260, legislative update. We call on Katie Schmidt, City Attorney for the City of West Fargo.
Thank you, Commission President and commissioners. This is the second reading of this ordinance, which I'll note will be Ordinance Number 1261 instead of 1260. Just a reminder that this ordinance makes changes due to statutory revisions made during this last legislative session. Since the first reading, a couple of additions have been made for ASP limits and fleeing. With that, I ask that you approve the second reading, and I am available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Again, we're, the purpose of this discussion and vote is to approve the second reading of Ordinance 1261.
I move we approve the second reading of Ordinance Number 1261.
Thank you, Commissioner Zundell, I have a motion, is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Anderson, second, we have a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Ordinance 1261. Legislative updates is outlined by Katie Schmidt, City Attorney. Is there any discussion?
I have one question.
Please, Commissioner Olson.
Well, it's on the screen right now, it shows 1260, so when will that be corrected to 1261?
Yeah, we just noticed the change today, so when it's published, it will be published as 1261.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Moving on, we're now in number nine?
Are we gonna vote?
Oh, I'm sorry, see, getting ready to go home. My apologies, commissioners. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Item number nine is correspondence, all correspondence has been distributed to your mailboxes or electronically to all of you. Does any commissioner, any non-agenda item that I'd like to bring up at this time? Commissioner Zundell, please?
Yes, I was contacted in my commission email from someone who was concerned about the traffic specifically around Elmwood Park. It came at perfect timing as we recently completed a safe assessment with CISA and DHS at the Park District, and one of the findings in there was the concept of traffic at Elmwood Park on 13th Avenue. I think the options for what we might be able to do are perhaps limited, but I was curious if any other commissioners were interested in directing staff to either look into some options or recommendations for where to go from here.
Commissioners, do you have any insight on that? I had two grandsons that have played Park District, baseball is summer, and I can attest to you that the parking is challenging when moms and dads and coaches and grandpas and grandmas all show up, so it is a concern of mine as well. People lose patience, and if there's a, if there happens to be a baseball game on the south side as well, human courtesy seems to go out the window as the woes are trying to exit from the north. Elmwood Park, youth like baseball diamonds as well as anyone else using the park to the south side. It's a legitimate...
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Olson?
Non-agenda item, we can't vote on this meeting, so it should be brought forward on the next meeting so we'll all have time to think about it.
I appreciate that Commissioner Zundell has brought up the issue. I understand that we cannot take any action that wasn't properly noticed before, but...
I guess I was more asking if we can direct staff to spend time to bring something formally to the commission.
We can't vote on that. So, it's out there. You visit with the powers that be that you think it needs to be, and when we're ready to bring it in, then we'll have it. It's an actionable item. Any other commissioner have any item? I have one. Chief Nielsen, once again, I received great gratitude and thanks from the city of Fargo for the issues that they dealt with last weekend, and/or your department assisted in dealing with the homicides that occurred. They are so very grateful that when they call on West Fargo PD to assist, whether it's from the investigative team or you just covering parts of the city because they had so many officers that were committed to those tragedies. So, on behalf of a grateful commission, and the city of West Fargo, and the cities as a whole, thank you for your leadership and facilitating that, good work.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else have any non-agenda item? Does any department head have anything that you'd like to bring forward this evening? Alright, Commissioner Olson?
Move to adjourn.
Commissioner Anderson?
Second.